Let's get started. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the rule.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Abadana.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Pearl Lutonda.
Here.
Counselor Garcia, absent.
Counselor Ray Coopero.
Here.
Ten members present. Do you have a call, Madam Chairman? First out of business. Memorials and celebratory resolutions. We have a celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson, all members of the City Council. Whereas MIT Women's Basketball Team reached some milestones this season, whereas MIT Women's Basketball Team was coached by Sonia Ramon, 10th year; Chelsea's own Lucia Robertson-Greigs, 7th year; Megan O'Connell, 1st year; and M.L. Dixon, 2nd year. And whereas MIT stated started as the 5th seed in the conference tournament and won their first playoff game since 2003. And whereas, NUMAC Playoff MIT had a quarterfinal game beating Springfield and was awarded the 1st place team Smith College, which MIT won 64 to 51. MIT moved on to the championship round, playing the #2 team WPI, which they defeated 54 to 50, the first NUMAC and women's basketball program history. And whereas MIT, the NUMAC champions, reached the Division III NCAA Tournament to play Marymount in their first-ever berth, playing the #17 team in the country, with an outcome of Marymount 58, MIT 54. And whereas MIT had the All-Conference Rookie of the Year, 1st-team player, 2 2nd-team players, and 1 player on the All-Conference Sportsmanship Team, 5 conference awards, and a program record. And they also collected a league-high 8 NUMAC Academic All-Conference Awards. And whereas, New England Women's Basketball Association MIT ranked 8th in NCAA Regional Rankings, ranked 25th in NCAA Scoring Defense, D3 Hoops, All-Region Honors, Kara Holinsky, Cosida, Academic All District, Kara Holinsky, NUBA All Region Team Taylor Redorville, Kara Holinsky, and NUBA All Rookie Team Kyle Gallagher. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the citizens of Chelsea, we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, hereby wish to extend our congratulations to the coaches and women of the team for this extraordinary achievement and for representing MIT with excellence and vigor.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Madam President. Doctor shenanigans under suspension.
Under suspension. No objections.
There are no objections. And on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to congratulate the MIT team. Journey for me started seven years ago when my daughter became part of the staff. And I've watched this team grow and get the kind of players that fit the system that the coaches look and they implement. And to be the first team to win the championship for MIT, it's outstanding. Knowing how difficulty it is in coaching, I had the opportunity to coach my colleague, Bob Bishop's daughter, when I was coaching at Pope John High School. So, I'd like to just say, congratulations. And once again, if we can suspend the rules and we could take a photo.
Okay, we'll suspend for a couple of minutes so we can take pictures. Congratulations to you all.
Public speaking is the next item.
Public speaking. Anybody that'd like to address the council, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Paul Corian. I'm a 32, 34-year veteran of the Chelsea 911. I'd like to read a letter to you. It's actually a, a, pinned to Chelsea Record on April 6th. The failure of the Chelsea Fire Apparatus Dispatch to a serious motor vehicle accident with an ejection of the southbound lane of Mystic Tobin Bridge Sunday is being blamed on a dispatch error. The accident occurred in the southbound lane on the Tobin further at the Charleston on Sunday, and one of the occupants was ejected from the vehicle with a serious accident. Typically, as a law enforcement agreement goes on with any Tobin Bridge emergency, Boston crews head northbound, Chelsea crews head southbound, due to easier access through its community in those directions. This is the case even in emergencies further back on the bridge of Chelsea or Charleston. However, during this accident on Sunday, Chelsea crews did not make it there. And some postulated that was because Boston had notified Chelsea. Not so, according to Chief Albanese, Chelsea Chief Albanese. This isn't a Boston fire issue, he said. On this call, it was a Chelsea dispatch error. Boston did notify our dispatch that they had information, but did not send it out. This can't happen. We have to do further investigation as well, but this was a Chelsea dispatch error that we are working to correct. Chief Albanese said he has spoke with the 911 Director about the issue and the chief warrants to reopen the policy regarding the Tobin Bridge responses. We're going to update the policy immediately and work on specifics, the specifics of it. This crash happened on Sunday morning at a canal ramp with two cars. It was listed as a very serious crash due to the fact that a person was ejected. My main reason for being here tonight is the nature of the letter. Chelsea 911 dispatchers work hard, and we take our job very seriously. The facts that were portrayed in this Chelsea Record article were sent over to the Chelsea Record even after the facts were garnered. The facts are, the Chelsea dispatches did not error in any way, shape, or form. And this is a slap in the face to the hard-working people in 911. The reports were taken mostly with Twitter posts, and the statements that were made by the chief to the Chelsea Record were callous, as far as we're concerned. We're going to take care of the situation. We're going to go about it our way. How that's going to be at the present time remains to be seen. The bottom line is, the people of Chelsea have no, and I repeat, no concerns when they call 911. They will get the help they need in an immediate and safe fashion. And to drop this on us as if we caused injury or dead-serious injury to this party as far as the response, there was no need for it. There was no need for this article to be written, and the facts were known before the article was written. I'm just here on behalf of my dispatchers and the people that I work with to let the city of Chelsea residents know, there's no issue with 911 dispatch. If you're calling with a serious emergency, you're going to get the help. There isn't going to be a delay. There's a lot of stuff going out on Twitter, there's a lot of stuff going out on Facebook about our operation. Our operation is sound, our dispatches are sound. And again, this article is a slap in the face to everybody that works over in that building, and I know most of you know how hard we work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else for public speaking?
We're in Colley 150, Captain's Row. I have four things to say in three minutes, so I'm going to get on it. The first thing...
Counselor. Excuse me, we're in the middle of a public hearing. Sorry, Ms. Corian.
Okay, you just want to start running?
We'll reset the clock for you.
Reset, thank you.
You have four minutes.
These are, in this plastic bag, is pictures of rusted metal coated with lead paint. It's sealed, it won't hurt you, but it will hurt our small children. This came from under Tobin on Bosun's Way several years ago when they were scraping the paint. Supposedly, they put fabric underneath, but they didn't. They did not put fabric under our side of the bridge, they put it under the part of the bridge that goes over the water and over Charleston. So, this is a small, I don't know why I saved this, I must have been having Aaron Brockovich fantasies, which I do from time to time. Anyway, a number of us have been protesting vigorously, trying to convince Mastat to do the right thing this time with the construction that we have going on on the bridge, which will be going on for three years. So, the last time, people who walk down Bosun's Way are usually people like myself, where elderly, we're disabled, we don't have cars, and so we go down the hill that way in order to get to Chelsea Square. And so, I'm telling you that this time, we're not picking up lead, we are calling Mastat. They claim that they will be open 24 hours a day in multilingual, with multilingual personnel. We will be calling them, and I would urge you to please join us, all the people in TV land particularly, if you see this anywhere along the span of the Tobin Bridge in Chelsea, please make that phone call. Okay, so the other thing is, here's another bag. This is a bag of nips, which I collected in 20 minutes in early March before my back started bothering me and I stopped. This was collected right near Fernandez, right at Chestnut and Williams Street, down Cherry Street, you know, around there. But before that, in February, I collected 150 nips along, in Chelsea Square, along Broadway, from Williams Street to Second Street, and particularly down Cherry Street, which is by way of saying that on February, on April 24th, Tuesday night...
One more minute. One more minute.
We will be having a public hearing, an opportunity for people to come in, and if you can't come in, please send an email to voice your opinion on banning nips in the city of Chelsea. Lastly, I would like to commend Counselor Jamir Rodriguez and his wonderful crew for another successful season with the CYBL, which will be having their championship games on Friday night, this Friday, at 5:30, beginning at 5:30 at the Williams School. This is a terrific thing for our kids and the adults who have been involved, it's just been spectacular, so please attend. Lastly, I would like to give a shout-out to the progressive people of Everett, who even as we speak are protesting a bigoted and hateful statement on Facebook by City Council Simonelli, in which he trashed the Haitian people. So, tonight, Haitian and non-Haitian people in our sister city are protesting that and demanding his resignation or ouster from the City Council. So I'm speaking in solidarity with them.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else for public speaking? Please state your name and address for the record.
One Gallego, 29 Franklin Street. I'm here basically to invite you to support me on a petition that I brought out to the Traffic Commission with regards to a portion of Franklin Street where my property is located. I fear for a long time, since I've been living there, that in case of a fire, maybe very possibly a fire truck will not be able to transit through my street, through the portion of my street. It's very narrow, and it's, it's parking allowed on both sides of the street. So I'm here to ask for your support, making the outside of Franklin Street on my portion of 29 Franklin Street, a one-sided parking. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Marcia Johnson Weiss, and I live on the same section of Franklin Street as Juan, and I wanted to also ask for your approval of the one-sided parking. I've owned my home for, since 1997, and as cars get bigger and the population has increased, our section of the block has just become so congested that it is really hazardous getting in and out, coming up the street, you can't pass, and we are strongly of the opinion that the fire truck cannot pass on that section of the road when it's parked on both space, both sides of the street. So I would ask that you go with the Parking Commis, what are they called, Department's Approval of One-Sided Parking. So, we are the only butters with driveways on that block, the rest of the street is one-sided. So, we are looking for your help in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Will Smear is the only person left. I'm assuming not. All right, next order of business. Approval of minutes. Counselor Tejada.
Do you accept and file a notice of suspension?
See, no objections.
If there's no objections, communications?
Communications from the City Manager.
Communications from the City Manager. First, communication, donation of surplus chairs to Governor Bellingham Carey House Association, dear counselors, at the specific request of the council pursuant to the Massachusetts General Act of 30B and 15G, and wanting to ask that the City Council formally approve the donation of two surplus chairs to the Governor Bellingham Carey House Association, a charitable organization. A copy of the required order is attached.
Chair recognizes Counselor Rodriguez.
Oh, on the communication, there'll be something coming up in new business.
See, no objections, so moved.
Next communication from the City Manager, free cash transfers. We have transfers to the stabilization accounts of $20 million. Final payment on New Clark Avenue School Project, $3 million.
Madam President, do you agree to this?
Okay.
Accept and file a communication?
Okay.
Under suspension. We had a brief Finance Committee meeting this evening on this $20 million appropriation, as well as the $3 million to pay off the final payment of the Clark School. The council has been involved in the last month with suggesting to the City Manager that we take $25 million of the free cash and put it into the stabilization fund, both for the city and for the school department capital improvement program. The City Manager appeared before the Finance Committee this evening, and after discussing the issue with him, he agrees that if the council wants to increase this $5 million, then at the end of the year, that money possibly could be transferred, whatever's left would be transferred in to the stabilization fund. I'm very happy to get the $15 million in there, and the $3 million, $5 million in the school, so that makes me very happy. At least that money is put aside, and we know it's a little more difficult to spend. So, these orders will be coming up this evening, as well as the orders to consolidate the other cap, the other stabilization funds that are currently existing in the city, so that there will then only be two, one for the city stabilization fund and one for the school improvement stabilization fund. We have this opportunity now because of this free cash. It's really a once-in-a-lifetime thing for the City Council, because I don't think this year there'll be that kind of free cash available, or in years going forward, that there'll be that kind of free cash available. We all know that this money was accumulated because of an increase in excise tax from the Enterprise Rent-A-Car down on the Marginal Street, and from what I understand from the City Manager, that amount of money is dropping down. I assume it's partially because of Uber and Lyft, and not so many people are renting cars, so they don't have as many cars in their fleet, therefore, there's not as much excise tax being paid. So while we have this opportunity to put this money in the stabilization fund, I congratulate the other members of the council for going along with the request in the past. When those come up tonight, I'm going to ask to lay them on the table, and we'll just act on what the City Manager sent in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop.
Next communication from the City Manager, notice of waiver intent. Dear counselors, pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02, I'm wanting to notify you that it is my intention to appoint Ms. Dragicka Ivanas, 91 Veterans Road, Number 307, Withers, Massachusetts, to the position of Assistant Procurement Officer, Business Manager, and to grant her waiver from the registry required set forth in Administrative Code Part IV, Section 112.01. As most of you know, Buber has been employed by the city for more than 16 years, working for the past decade as the Business Manager for the DPW. In accordance with Section 112.02, I request that you provide me with any comment on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Counselor Coopero moves to accept and file a communication under suspension.
The next communication.
We got one, sir.
File a communication under suspension.
Yeah, we got it.
Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from City Clerk, Packing Clerk, Jeanette Sintra, on White, regarding counsel Abadana's request for reconsideration of proposed zoning provision on the marijuana establishment.
Counselor Abadana.
Accept and file.
Yeah, the floor, Counselor.
As we all know, that two weeks ago, this City Council voted to approve what was proposed to us by the administration for new zoning regulations and where we would situate retail marijuana. During that debate, I had proposed not allowing it in the industrial zones as it was proposed, but rather in the shopping centers, where I felt that those areas are more conducive to retail. Immediately thereafter, though my amendment had passed, immediately after passage, new information came to light. And typically, in the time of consideration, when new information comes that was not available at the time, you want to say, hey, maybe we need to explore this one more time. One of the points that was made to me post-passage was that, I believe some of us, myself included, were, believed that this city was going to have a total of four, total four licensed operations to grow marijuana, sell marijuana, and such. That is not the case. The case is that we can have an unlimited number of growers in the city of Chelsea. There is no cap on the number of facilities that grow marijuana in the city of Chelsea. So unlike what was, I was led to believe, someone who takes a license to sell it, and also a license to grow it, are not two licenses against the four, but will just be one. So again, that is a little bit different than what was proposed. It led the, it to be a little bit more appetizing, since we thought, well, a grower can be also a seller, and that's two, now we only have to worry about one other, two other ones. But that's not the case. We will have four retail, no matter what. Second, immediately after, there was some outcry from, when this stuff became public, there were those who were butters in the industrial zones that were caught off-guard. Many of them had not even known or made aware that this was going on, that this council was discussing, nor that the city, despite the outreach. Now, if you compare this exercise to what we've done in the past, think about the waterfront revisioning that we went through, or going through. The city reached out to residents, reached out to butters, had a company hired, made sure everyone got together, gave everyone blue little stickers on little, you know, billboards, say, what would you like to see here, and so forth. This was not done. Of course, we were rushed, but unlike other exercises, and I, again, remember when the city went through the exercise of the R3 District down on Spencer Ave, that was a much more comprehensive exercise, more involvement of the public, and that was not done here. And yet, as troubling as that is, no, nothing was, no letter to the property owners that this is going to be changed, nothing of, say, the outreach that was done, whether N-Star was doing something like this, or Mastat, none of this was done. So it was troubling to those who were going to be impacted the most, that they weren't made aware. Lastly, and I need you to pay attention to this, in the Boston Globe last Monday, on the first day that licenses are going to be allowed, over 200 applicants applied for a license in the state. And unbeknownst, I didn't know this fact, is that the legislature passed this law that allowed...
One more minute, Counselor.
I think I'm giving a little, I don't know if there was ever time limits on counselors, but in that, in that passage of the law, they stated that communities that have higher drug-related arrests and incidences are going to be the ones that they're going to pass to the first. In other words, communities like Chelsea, anyone who applies here is going to get a faster process than someone in Wellesley. I'm reminded of the scene in The Godfather, when all the Dawns got together and they decided they were going to get into the drug-dealing business, yet they said, a Dawn very famous, but we're going to just keep it in the colored section. They're animals, let them just kill themselves. This is what the state legislature said to us. They said, oh my God, you know, let us put this in the worst sections of the state. This is what they're doing. In the worst parts, they're the most, you know, the, and this is par for the course on any issue, whether you're talking about state education funding for kids, whether you're talking about how a state agency comes out and how they're going to treat us, whether you're talking about Mast, but over and over and over again, it's the communities that are hurt the most that the ones they want to stick it to. And it's shocking. At the end of the day, I'm going to, I know I have short of time, so I'll just say, while I have strong objections to placing this in the industrial zone, I still do, I find it that we're limited to where we can put these things. And I'm going to rescind my, my vote on this, despite it, and I'm going to attempt to try to attack this in a different mode. So, again, while I have all these reasons why I think we should revote, at the end of the day, there are other ways that we can address this, and those are the manners that I'm going, I'm going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next item.
Yep.
Communication received from City Stylus of the Sherwood Watson Fisher regarding a new ordinance, Chapter 14, Article 9, Marijuana Establishments, Local License of Marijuana Establishments.
(inaudible).
Thank, okay, thank you. I don't have it.
We have a copy of a communication received from Council President Vido regarding a zoning amendment to code of ordinances, Chapter 34, Article 5 of Off-Street Parking Requirements, Section 34-106.
Chair recognizes Counselor Tejada.
Do you accept and file a communication? There'll be something coming up...
Is something coming up under new business?
Communication received from City Parking Clerk, Jeanette Centrum White regarding the actions that were approved at the March twenty-seven, twenty eighteen Traffic Parking Commission meeting.
Councilor Bishop.
Under suspension.
You have the floor, Councilor.
At the last, last month's meeting of the city council, I objected, rejected a particular item that was on the list of those items that were approved by the Traffic and Parking Commission. And I stated at that time, and I'll state it again tonight, that I found it very hard to believe.
Excuse me, Councilor Bishop, can you just aim the mic, microphone? They can't hear you in the back.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
How's that?
Thank you.
I stated at the, at the time last month that I was a little bit upset with the Traffic and Parking Commission because they went forward and made a change like this in a neighborhood without having a public hearing. I think anyone who lives in any neighborhood has a right to express their opinion on something before it's made a regulation. And so therefore, I rejected this when it came up last month. The Traffic and Parking Commission at the meeting of March twenty-seventh held a meeting, held a public hearing, and no one attended in opposition to it. So my problem is with the process that they used to approve it the first time. I have no problem with this time. So I moved to accept and file the entire list of Traffic and Parking.
Under suspension.
Under suspension.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have a communication received from Council President Vido regarding the City Manager Evaluation Subcommittee. It's for your information, the City Manager Evaluation Subcommittee. Dear councilors, please be advised that the following city councils have been appointed to serve in a special subcommittee for the City Manager Evaluation. Councilor Damali Vidotia, woman, Councilor Leah Robinson, Councilor Calvin Brown, and Councilor Robert Bishop.
I'd also just like to add, Councilor District Five City Council Judith Garcia to the list. But this is just a FYI. Well, yeah, yeah, just adding Judith to it. Thank you.
Okay. We have now coming up second readings. First order under second readings, order introduced by Council Vido and Council Office Nada. Order that the city hereby accepts the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter sixty and three C, for the purpose of creating a municipal scholarship fund and operating such fund in full accordance with the statute.
Councilor Janeda. Do you want to speak on it?
No, I think they're ready to start.
Okay. Okay.
A yes would be to adopt. Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
No.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Abadina?
Yes.
Councilor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilor Pearl Tonda?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia absent, Councilor Recupero?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, two opposed, one absent. Motion adopted. The next order introduced by Councilor Bishop. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of one hundred fifty thousand dollars from free cash to a new fund, number seventy-four hundred, Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program to provide tuition funding for Chelsea High School graduates.
Councilor Bishop.
As I stated at the last meeting, as the chairman of the Finance Committee, one of my duties is to put these things before the city council, which I did. I signed this order to have it appear here, last meeting and tonight. However, I cannot vote for this. I stated at the last meeting that for me, it's a big problem because we're using taxpayers' money.
What's the, what's the motion, Councilor?
Hmm, that's a good question. I guess roll call.
Okay, move to roll call.
We're using taxpayers' money for something that we're not required to spend it on. Over the last few weeks, there have been many youth that have come up from the school system stating that they need money for this and they're not getting enough money for that and asking the city council to do what they could to get more funding for the schools. This money, this hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a pilot program. Next year, it could be a lot more money, or I would think, or possibly it could be, you know, any amount. But this is not money that's being spent on the children that are in the public school system now. It's being spent on graduates of the program. People that have already gone through K through twelve and now are going on to college. I just don't understand how we are getting into the business of paying for college for a select few that resided in the city. There are lots of children going to college in Chelsea where the mother and father or guardians are paying for their college education. And they will all tell you the same thing, they're struggling. Because they're paying not only the college education for the child, they're also paying their taxes. And they expect their taxes to be spent on things that have to be spent on. Police protection, fire protection, providing an education from K through twelve. That's what we are charged to do, to come up with the money to do those things. I'm not knocking this program, okay? It's a good program, but it's something that should be funded with private money, not with taxpayers' dollars. I consider this to be a misuse of taxpayers' money. And I ask each and every councilor here tonight to think very hard before they vote to put up this hundred and fifty thousand, because in the budget that's coming up, you may have to put up five hundred thousand to put money in the pockets of a select few students that have already graduated from grade twelve in Chelsea. I commend them for wanting to go to college, there's no question about that. It's a good program, but it shouldn't be funded with taxpayers' money. That's my only complaint. I'm not knocking those who are proposing the program in any way. It's a good thing, but not with taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Councilor Recupero.
I agree with my fellow council. For one thing, you opening up a can of worms. Who's to say who goes, who doesn't go? How are you going to regulate who lives here, who doesn't live here? So you telling people, come to my city, we're going to send you to college for free. It's a good idea to do it, but it's a bad thing to put it on the poor taxpayers' backs. Not only on that, the poor people that are paying a striving and right to live here. How can, honestly, us say? And then there's something else, too. If you were going to allow to go to college, well, make it any colleges. Why just put Bunker Hill? If that's the case, make them go to any college, not just Bunker Hill. And besides that, when you go to Bunker Hill, you already, if you're low income, if you are a minority, you already go to college. You already get these types of grants. Why should the city be involved in putting these types of grants to send? There's nothing wrong with trying to send a young man. I raised fifteen children of my own, and it doesn't matter. My children went to college on their own, wherever could, by student loan or wherever they could. The city shouldn't be involved in making funds for other kids to go to college. I don't see any other part of the state that's involved in that. I don't know any part of the state unless, City Manager, can you tell us if any of the other cities?
You got to talk directly, you can't talk to the council, to the council, not the city manager, please.
Okay, so can we ask the city manager if there's any other ones that are providing these type of funds? Okay, we can't. Well, I've looked and I haven't seen any of them that had those types of funds. So I don't know why we want to get into the business of doing that. And then, if that's the case, let's make an amendment to this, that we want not just Bunker Hill, any community college to go there. That's the bar, that's, that's good enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other debate on order? Chair recognizes Councilor Abadina.
I respect the opinion, but I have to disagree on this. I think that we have here on the next one, and I wish, I wish that this had been reversed, that the one that's coming up next was first, because in having conversations, there is an agreement that the city should pay for the education of its employees. And you say, well, they're our employees, it makes sense for us to have to have them get college educated. Yet, when we're talking about our own kids, you don't see the same value, and that makes no sense. The, the, the school system, educational system that we now have is outdated. And I mean an outdated in this sense. Everyone knows that nowadays, you need more than just a twelfth-grade education to be successful in this economy. It's not a manufacturing heavy dependent. This is an economy that you need to have advanced courses beyond high school. So as a city, like any other city, in charge of education, educating its youth, we have to prepare them. And it only makes sense that we are preparing them to enter the workforce and that unlike thirty, forty, fifty years ago, a college education is part of that requirement. And let me make it clear, this pilot program is about getting two years of an associate's degree, a path to getting maybe a bachelor, no, an associate's degree. So I would say, yes, if we are keeping the same thought and the same idea that the founders of our education system started off with, with saying, and education is important, we're going to go first to twelfth grade, then now in today's society, we also have to recognize that a college education is needed and it should be part of it, and we should be funding it. Lastly, it's been brought up that it's a pilot program and no one else does it. Well, you know what? There was a one point where no one had early education, that Chelsea was the first city to offer it under Silver, under BU. And guess what? Everyone now recognizes how important that is and others are copying us. So if we're the ones to set the trend, I'm more than happy to say, guess what? You need it. Everyone guarantee, everyone recognizes.
One minute, Councilor.
And I'm, I think it's, it's only just that we prepare our kids as we should for a future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Chair recognizes Councilor Tejada. When you first.
You first.
Councilor Tejada?
So, well, my opinion is obviously, I think that higher education is very important. My challenge is with specifically just that the money is geared towards Bunker Hill specifically, but I guess they're here, so that's probably why. I guess where I have a problem is this, you know, you take care of your household and then you, you help out your, the rest of your family members, right? Because if you take, help everybody out before you solidify your household, your household's going to tank eventually, right? So this year, for example, we are, I believe, like almost three million dollars, we have a three million dollar deficit, more or less, in our regular schooling, high school, junior high school, elementary. That's our responsibility. And I think that if we have any excess cash, it should probably go towards alleviating that deficit. While I appreciate that most, you know, the whole Bunker Hill, Bunker Hill's a relatively affordable, I mean, it's my alma mater, one of them, and it's a relatively affordable school, so most people.
Two minutes, Councilor.
Are able to get some kind of relief, Pell Grant and all that, all that kind. I just feel that if there is excess cash, I appreciate the pilot program concept, but because it's a pilot program, it gives you the impression that it's going to grow into a mini-series in a TV show, right? The, the budget might, has a great possibility of growing from just a hundred and fifty to, you know, could be anything, because there'll be a lot of people requesting it. So I just think we should solidify ourselves, and if we have extra money, it should go to the school system, the regular school system, not necessarily the extended. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Chair recognizes President Councilor.
Feels so good to speak again. I just want to commend the city manager on his leadership with this order. I, with respect to my, to my colleagues on the, on the other side, I wholeheartedly disagree. As we continue to gentrify and move residents out of this community, I think now is a more, there couldn't be a better time to invest in our young people, to think that we should only invest in them up until the twelfth grade, I think it's just passing the buck. Many of these students are part of the dual enrollment process with Bunker Hill, they already have credits, but they don't have the finances to continue. For us to invest in them, walking away with an associate's degree that can give them an upper hand in today's world where, as city, my colleague here has said, that without an education, how far will you really go in life? I think it's so important for us to invest in our young people. And with all due respect with, with my counsel on the other side, many kids do not have two-parent households. I'm grateful that my child has two parents at home and that we'll do whatever we can to make sure that she'll have all the education that we can afford. But there are many kids that don't have those, those privileges. I find it almost comical that some other councilors would talk about the city not getting involved and, and investing all this money. When I came onto this council, I was so concerned with the amount of money we were dishing out to nonprofits. So to people who were on the council before were okay with dishing money to nonprofits, but it's a problem when we're investing in our young people. I, I, I don't agree. I believe, I'm okay, I'm of the belief that it's okay to set a trend. Yeah, we've never done this before, maybe other people aren't doing it, but if we always do what we've always done, we'll always get what we've always gotten. So again, I will be voting in favor. I, and I hope that some of my colleagues would also consider investing in our young people. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson, you recognize?
I, I had some concerns when this first came about and I, I went and did some digging. And to qualify for the, the former Chelsea High student would have to complete at least twelve credits in a dual enrollment program while in high school. And the student must remain a resident of Chelsea during the entire period of support. The student would also be required to apply for a Pell Grant through Bunker Hill. The subsidy program would pay the difference between the Pell Grant award and the cost of the remaining courses toward an associate's degree up to fifteen credits per semester. Bunker Hill would support the program by waiving the tuition, the portion of the cost. This consideration by Bunker Hill does demonstrate its commitment to the success of the pilot program. So I will be voting in favor of the program.
Thank you, councilors. Any more debate on the appropriation? Recognize Councilor Paul Tonda.
Kind of torn between both sides, my fellow colleagues here. I mean, it seems like a great program, and I wish when I was growing up, we had these type of programs to help us go to school as well. I'm just kind of confused on both ends. It is a hundred fifty thousand dollar pilot program, but is, do we bring it up for debate two years from now, a year from now, to see if this pilot program is working? And if it is working, how much more is it going to cost us? Or does it stay where it is at the hundred fifty thousand mark? I mean, like I said, it is a great opportunity, like my fellow colleague says, you come out of high school, you have an associate's degree. I wish I had that opportunity, but unfortunately, I didn't. But so it seems like a great program, and I'm kind of torn on which way to go with this here. Like I said before, I wish I knew how much more money we were going to be putting into this program. I mean, like I said, it is, is a good program for the kids. I mean, things are happening throughout the world, other cities, towns, states, you know, doing stuff for the kids that they can do. I mean, it's tough these days, kids come out of college, they got a hundred fifty thousand dollars in loans, it's like a mortgage payment on a house. I mean, it's tough to pay back. By the time you're paying for that, you're trying to buy a house, it's kind of tough. So I think it is a good program, so I'll see what happens when the vote comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Matter before, before us is a vote on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars appropriation for the Bunker Hill's pilot program before us from the city manager. Any more debate before we go to a vote?
For this to pass?
A majority.
Simple majority, six.
Six. Okay.
A yes vote would be to adopt and a no vote would be to deny. Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
No.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Abadina?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Pearl Tonda?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia absent, Councilor Recupero? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, two opposed, one absent. Motion adopted.
Yes, votes have it, it's adopted. Next order?
The next order, introduced by Councilor Bishop. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from free cash to a new fiscal year twenty eighteen personal, personal department account, personnel salaries, tuition reimbursement for employee tuition payments.
Chair recognizes Councilor Bishop?
Roll call.
To a roll call, okay.
No discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion, okay. Yes, to adopt.
Yes, to adopt. Counselor Vido. Counselor Lopez. Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Brown. Counselor Bishop. Counselor Tahada. Counselor Avazaneda. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Peraltonda. Counselor Garcia absent, Counselor Recupero. Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion adopted. The next order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Now therefore be it hereby ordered that the city council establish and create a new special purpose stabilization fund for major repairs to all Chelsea public school buildings pursuant to the Massachusetts general law. Forty B and five B, this fund shall be called the public school buildings major repair stabilization fund. Being further ordered, the Chelsea City Council hereby appropriates from free cash $3 million into the public school building major repair stabilization.
Counselor Bishop.
In lieu of the city manager sending in the communications that he did this evening, I'm going to move to lay this on the table.
On the table it lies.
Okay, let's see where we are now. Appointments to boards and commissions. We have the appointments for the boards and commissions. You want me to read the names?
Second reading. Chair recognizes Counselor Lopez.
Individual?
Individual roll calls. No objections? Okay. Louie, did you want to say something? Counselor Tahada?
I need to remove myself from Matt Frank.
Okay, so I don't know where he is.
When it, when it comes up.
So when it comes up, you just... He's the first one, so maybe you should excuse yourself.
For appointment to the licensing commission, Matt Frank, 41 Geholy Road, Chelsea, for a three-year term, expiring 2021. Roll call by?
Counsel Lopez.
Angel Lopez. A yes would be to approve, a no would be to deny. Counselor Vido.
No.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we're doing individual votes.
Each one has an individual?
Correct.
Yeah. Counselor Vido.
No.
Counselor Lopez?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez? Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Bishop? Counselor Tahada is excused.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, we're doing them individually. Can he back up on his vote?
At the end of the roll call. At the end of the roll call.
At the end of the roll call. At the end. He announced it. He announced it. He, we'll do it at the end of the roll call.
Counselor Avazaneda? Absent. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Peraltonda? Counselor Garcia? Absent. Counselor Recupero? One in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no's, two absent, one excused. The appointment is denied. The next appointment is for Joan Cromwell Planning Board, 38 Addison Street. Leah Robinson, roll call. Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tahada? Absent. Counselor Avazaneda? Absent. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Peraltonda? Counselor Garcia absent, Counselor Recupero? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight in favor and none opposed, three absent. The appointment is confirmed. The next one would be appointment to the planning, I got that, appointment to the panel. Appointment to the council council, Ms. Juliana Borgiani Geiger, 61 Botswana Way, Chelsea, for a three-year term. Let me get that name down. Leah Robinson, roll call. Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop? Counselor Tahada? Absent. Counselor Avazaneda? Absent. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Peraltonda? Counselor Garcia? Absent. Counselor Recupero? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight in favor, none opposed, three absent. Juliana Geiger is affirmed. Let's see who else we have. Vanessa Mendoza Mercado for a three-year term at Chelsea Community School. But any motion to adopt? Leah Robinson? Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop? Counselor Tahada?
Yes.
Counselor Avazaneda? Absent. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Peraltonda? Counselor Garcia? Absent. Counselor Recupero? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. Vanessa is affirmed. I think we have one more. Gerald Slater, 77 Gaffield Ave, Councilor on Elder of Fears. Leah Robinson, roll call. Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop? Counselor Tahada?
Yes.
Counselor Avazaneda? Absent. Counselor Robinson? Counselor Peraltonda? Counselor Garcia? Absent. Counselor Recupero? Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. A motion for Gerald Slater is affirmed. That's all the appointments you have.
New business.
That's it on second readings, I believe.
That's it, yeah, we're on to new business.
New business. First order under new business, order introduced by Counselor Garcia. Be it hereby ordered by City Council, City of Chelsea, follows pursuant to the MGL C3B Section 15G, the City Council hereby agrees to donate to the Governor of Bellingham Care Health Association, a charitable organization, two surplus chairs previously utilized in the City Council conference room.
Counselor Bishop? Yeah.
You can have it.
Yeah. Yeah, we're voting on the chairs. So we're doing a roll call on the donation of the chairs.
Yes, to donate. Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop? Counselor Tahada?
Yes.
Counselor Avazaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Peraltonda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent. Motion adopted. Order introduced...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Recupero.
That's terrible. The next order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of $15 million from free cash to the general stabilization account.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bishop.
Move to a second reading?
Move to a second reading.
I think we've all, we've spoken enough on it. We're all happy that this money is going into the stabilization fund and it'll be there if the city should need it, days turn to downside.
Next order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of $5 million from free cash to the school capitalization.
Counselor Bishop? Move to a second reading.
Next order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order that Chelsea City Council authorize the transfer of the full balance of $179,251.09 from the Planning and Development Stabilization Fund to the General Stabilization Account Fund.
Counselor Bishop?
Madam President, I move to a second reading.
Second reading.
Order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order Chelsea City Council authorize the transfer of the full balance of $62,845.88 from the Capital Stabilization Account Fund to the General Stabilization Account.
Counselor Bishop?
I move to a second reading.
Second reading.
Order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order Chelsea City Council authorize the transfer of the full balance of $140,349.82 from the Operating Stabilization Account Fund to the General Stabilization.
Counselor Bishop?
Second reading.
Second reading.
Order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order that Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of $3 million from free cash to the Clark Avenue Middle School Fund Series.
Counselor Bishop?
Madam President, I move to a second reading.
Okay.
If I might.
You may have the floor.
Very briefly, I would just want to state that this is to pay off the final payment of the Clark School. Instead of putting it out to borrow, we're using the free cash at the direction of the city manager, which I think is a wise thing to do, rather than borrow it just to use the money that we have and make that payment in cash and we don't have to pay any interest on it. So I move to a second reading.
Okay, we have the order, article 11, Amendment to Establishments Be It Ordained By the City Council, City of Chelsea Follows That the Chelsea Court of Honors Should Be Amended By Adding The Following Ordinance, the Chelsea Court of Honors, Chapter 14, Article 11, is hereby added, introduced by Counselor Vido.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
I want to move that to a conference under suspension. There's no objections?
Seeing none, so moved.
Order introduced by Counselor Vido. Where resident express purposes are missed was only to promote the health, safety and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Chelsea. Now therefore be it ordered that the following petition for the adoption of an amendment to Chapter 34, Article 5, Section 34, 106, off-street parking requirements of specific uses of the city of Chelsea zoning honors be reviewed and that a public hearing be scheduled on May 21 to discuss the proposed zoning amendments pursuant to the Massachusetts general laws, C48.
Chair recognizes Counselor Tahada.
I move to a second reading. Conference under suspension, there's no objection. I move to a planning board for recommendation and schedule a public hearing for May 31st.
Twenty.
Twenty-first, my apologies. May 21st.
Thank you, counselor.
Next order introduced by Counselor Recupero. Order that the city manager look into putting a camera between Highland and Essex and Suffolk Street.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero.
I'd like to adopt on the suspension of no, no objection. I'd like to speak on.
You have the floor, counselor.
This, this is between Essex, Suffolk and Highland. There's a pole. A lot of people dump trash there. That's all they do is the trash dumping joint and they would dump dead bodies around that area. So I would like to see a camera installed because over there, because it's, all the trash seems to go to that area. Maybe we can catch these trash offenders. It's a good thing to put a camera to watch all the trash that gets dumped in that particular area. So I hope the city manager looks into it and puts a camera. I'll give him the pole number. I think the pole number is 50019. That's where the camera should be installed, but I could be wrong with the pole number because I, maybe I didn't see it right. But it's around that area and I hope he does install one. Thank you.
Last order, Madam Chairman, introduced by Counselor Vido. Order that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into painting the crosswalk on marginal streets somewhere between Highland Street and Willow Street.
Chair recognizes Counselor Lopez.
I'm in suspension. I would like to speak on it.
You have the floor, counselor.
Yes, on marginal street, right on Willow, this, this dangerous corner that, where people want to walk across street, cars don't slow down and we would love to have a crosswalk paint there, so for the safety of our people. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
That's all.
That's it. So, public announcements. No public announcements? Well, I have one. On Thursday, April 19th, that's next Thursday, the Chelsea Hunger Network is having their Empty Bowls annual event. I believe it's $20 a ticket. All proceeds go to serve families in the community through pantries or, or just to, to, to address the food scarcity issue that we have in the community. It's an awesome event. You come and you buy a bowl and you get free soup and the whole community is there. It's at the Williams School next Thursday at 5:00 PM. Any other public announcements, counselors? All right, so I'd like to have a couple of moment, a moment of silence for a couple of people.